Good afternoon. Like college leading to order. We're gonna start out with prayer and pledge. I would like to ask Dr. K Miller with Elias African prayer.
Father, we thank you, Lord, as we ask that you come with the spirit of knowledge and wisdom and understanding, counsel and might. As you enable us to lead this city in the direction that you've caused and you've called it to go into. And so, Father, we just bless you and we thank you that your grace is here, your anointing is here, and your ministry angels are here to lead us and guide us. Father, we bless you and we thank you for our mayor. We ask that you crown him with favor and wisdom as he leads and guides us. And that you would also give us the knowledge and understanding to move forward in what you've called us to. And so, we bless you and we thank you in Jesus' mighty name.
Please believe to live like the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in the liberty, liberty that does not suffer.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Maxine Miller. Latoya Harris. Joe St. Columbia. Don Etherly. Monica Davis. Kyle Miller. Six present, no absence.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. At the beginning of each year, the city council's first duty is to establish meeting dates, times, and regulations for meetings, including whether you follow Robert's rules or order of municipal rules, whether the public will be allowed to be on the agenda and speak and et cetera. And so, the floor should be open for you all to discuss it. Historically, we've met on the first and third Tuesdays. Also, to its discussion is, we see we have a crowd here, we have open meetings, whether the meeting will remain open and on Zoom. So, with that, Mayor, I will yield the floor to you so you can begin to entertain discussions about dates, times, and et cetera.
What's the pleasure of the body? Would you all like to keep it first, Thursday, Tuesday, or would you all like to change it again? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion if we accept the dates and times as we have previously, there cannot be any change.
Got a motion by Mrs. St. Columbia to keep, Councilman St. Columbia, to keep the meeting dates as is. Can I get a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk? No, sorry, in discussion.
Yes, sir. So, just a clarification, that's the first Tuesday and Thursday.
The time, we're meeting at six thirty with it.
Six o'clock.
Or six o'clock.
Is there any emotion? Did you say?
Yes, that's in a second, but I have one, one question. If Mr. St. Columbia would be willing to add Robert's rules of order to the motion, we can take care of it.
Absolutely, yes, sir. We need to follow Robert's rules as well. Add that to my motion. Thank you.
And I second it.
Any discussion? That, Clerk, would you please?
Davis?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Kyle Miller?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Maxine Miller?
Yes.
Six yes.
I must say, if I made this, two, two things. The meeting is open tonight. Will you all have them remain open and be on Zoom? And also, we have not addressed whether you allow citizens' commentary or not. Now, the reason why we have to address the issue of sympathetic commentary, if you open for one, you, you, you have to open it for all. And we cannot regulate content. We can regulate the time, manner, and place, which include the length of the speech. Previously, the city council has left it closed, and, and the person had to go through the process of being on the agenda, that we wouldn't allow people just simply to get up and start talking. What is the pleasure of the council? Mr. Mayor, would you ask the council, what's their pleasure relating to all of that?
What is your pleasure?
Can we have the end of the year for a certain period of time?
If, if you show choose, you can have it at the end, end of meetings and for a limited time frame. If you have it, it can only be, I wouldn't recommend longer than three minutes. But also, if you have where people can address you, whatever they say is what they say. You cannot regulate, you cannot stop it because it would be violating the Constitution, freedom of speech. Because we cannot get into the content. And there are times that people will say things that you absolutely despise. They could say whatever they want to say, but they have a right to say it. But in the years past, we have not allowed commentary. But it's up to you all at the first meeting to decide how you all want to do it.
Keeping in mind that any citizen can ask to be on the agenda, and they can contact the clerk on the Thursday before the next meeting and be placed on the agenda for whatever, for whatever item they want to address to the council. That's the way we've always done. It keeps it from being a free fall, when people just come up and start yelling and saying stuff.
Now, the other thing that must have to say, in terms of a free fall, what some cities have been sued for, once you open up and person one starts talking, they get their three minutes. Person two starts talking, they get their three minutes. We can't just say, you can't talk. Because then, what the law says is their opportunity to speak is taken from them, and they have a violation of freedom of speech. And so, that's part of why the council is always saying, get on the agenda. So, and you still can't regulate content, but you know what, what they are talking about. And then, it doesn't create long, elongated meetings. But still, it's up to the body how you want to do it. That's something the council has to vote on.
Recognize, Councilman St. Columbia.
I think the way that it has been done for many, many years in the past, we should retain, because it was we should allow the public to come forward and, but let them get on the agenda and address ahead of time, so we'll be prepared to answer questions that they might have. Just to pop up and start talking, the meeting could last all night.
Okay.
And we don't want to open a circus in any manner. Well, I think it needs to be controlled in some manner, rather than just open it up. That's my opinion.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And I was thinking the same thing. Keep the meeting open, provided that people want to get up and speak, provided that they've come, they're on the agenda. Can we not do both?
It's legally, you can do both. The, the issue is, if you open up and they start talking, the city council can't stop them. They can get their three minutes, they can say whatever they want to say in those three minutes. And we cannot stop, this body cannot stop them from saying what they're saying. They just, you regulate the time, three minutes. And so, whatever they want to say, they say, and, and if they say something that, that upsets you, they just said it. They, they, and you cannot stop it because you'll be regulating content. And then, you open up for one, you had to open up for the next one, and the next one, and the next one, and the next one. And so, historically, what the council has done in light of that, is to said, get on the agenda. But every meeting, organization meeting, the first meeting of the year is an organization meeting, you have to make the decision every year.
I don't think that they should be able to just come in and just spring things on the, on the committee like that. I think it'll work smoother. Like you said, it won't be a circus with people coming up with lots of drama. I think they should be, add on to the agenda at each, before each meeting.
I do too, and I think that it should be open. And understanding that, I understand that they only have three minutes. Right? And I'm looking, yeah, I would think.
When you say, I'm trying to get to understand the word.
You're saying both.
You're saying both?
I mean, I'm, okay, and this is my first meeting, so y'all forgive me. To me, I think the meetings should be open to the public. They should be able to come in and sit down. I believe that if they're going to get up and say something, they should be on the agenda first. There should be some order to it. I don't know that we should allow three-minute inserts once we've already started the meeting, if they're not on the agenda, and they should not be able to speak. Can we do that?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we were co-making on two things. Let me be clear for the audience and for the listener's sake. What Mrs., what Miss Miller is saying is, the meeting is to be open. That's some separate part from who has access to agenda. And I, you're saying the meetings will be open, but as relates to a person being to speak to the council, they should get on the agenda through the normal process. Now, the one thing I say is to the mayor and to the council. We can't limit what the person wants to say. If they want to be on the agenda, they follow the process, they can get on the agenda. And sometimes, you've had mayors who've tried to limit citizens from being able to say something because they don't like what citizens are saying. We cannot get into that if they go through the process, get on the agenda, they get on the agenda. So, one issue is, whether it's more open, this mayor has not said that the meetings be closed, his body has not voted opposed. We have a full audience here, and that's one issue. The second issue is the agenda. It seems to me that the body is saying, let's have the person go through process, get on the agenda. Let's have the meeting both open and on Zoom. Is that a consensus of what you all were saying? Okay. Is anyone getting a form of motion? I'm sorry, ma'am.
Councilwoman Davis made a motion to keep the meetings as they basically are, like they already are. Mr. Etherly seconds the motion. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Excuse me. Read the motion, please, before you hold on.
Okay, it's allow the meetings to be open to the public and allow persons to speak who are on the agenda.
In addition.
Who will make that decision as to who can speak or approval of it?
They submitted to the city clerk.
As we have in the passage.
Yes. In addition, Madam Clerk, what, what I stated in Miss Davis' move was, the meeting is also available on Zoom.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and I do have one, one, let me, because I, since I seconded the motion, I have one thought. I thought it was just on the issue of, of citizens getting on the agenda, not the openness of the meeting. The meetings were always open. I'm not opposed to it being open. We stopped, we limited access because of COVID. And so, if, I think we ought to be aware, if something happens down the road, I've gone nearly three years and avoided it altogether. I don't want to get it now. If, if we have a flare up, then, you know, we should be aware, we can return the Zoom on. Hey, I'm just talking, Ms. Rams. That's not something.
May I ask, is it all right if, when the person submits a request to be on the agenda, may I ask what it's about, so we can have a little bit of an idea?
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
And okay, and then also, do you want to limit the number of persons to be on an agenda at any given meeting, so as not to run the meeting too long? That may be no more than five guest speakers or something? Or can we do that?
Yes, you, you, you can do both. As it relates to the the content, you can just, the only thing they have disclosed to you is the subject matter.
Okay.
And they revealed to you what the subject matter is, so you know what, the, the public can know what they're talking about, and, and the body will have some idea what they're talking about. You can limit the number of people on a particular meeting that the council so chooses. And you can limit the timeframe, because you can say three to five minutes if you so choose. But the motion does not include that at this time.
And Ms. Rams, I'll just throw this in, if they have any handouts, we would like for them to be included in the packets, so we can see it before we get here at the table.
Okay.
We need to be aware ahead of time, is what you're saying.
Right. Yeah. I guess the question is, you're making your motion.
Ms. Davis, you're making your motion to include that discussion?
Yes.
Okay, the, the subject matter, they must inform you and provide the documents in the package. Is that correct? Your second amendment to include that?
Yes, second.
Because does everybody have an understanding of the motion and the second?
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Kyle Miller?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Yes.
Maxine Miller?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Six yes.
One final thing, organization of meetings, the, the ordinance is provided that we're supposed to get you the information by Friday before meeting. Sometimes, council members take it up and that, that sort of thing. But sometimes, the council has voted that the council can change at the table. And the body has not addressed that issue, whether you're just going to address the things that's in your packet, or whether you're going to deal with other things that may come up at the meeting.
Okay. When are we supposed to get our packets?
The Friday before the city council meeting. Mr. Etherly just reminded me that the ordinance does say that, that council can amend, you have an ordinance that does say that the council can't amend the agenda at, at, at a regular call meeting.
Okay.
So, that's, that's a moot point.
In other words, if something comes up
Right, you're all going to address it there.
during the meeting, and we need to deviate in some manner, we can buy counsel, as we always have in the past.
Yes, sir. That's, that's already in the ordinance.
We can deviate from the agenda
Yeah.
to take care of the business as it happens.
Yes, sir. But I think that the administration, whether it's the city attorney, the mayor, the city clerk, city treasurer, we all need to make our, and the city council, if you all want to have someone on agenda, that we try to have it in the packet by the Friday, so that everybody knows what we're talking about. Yes. With that, I yield to you, Mr. Mayor.
The next thing is Resolution One, bank signatures and authorizations.
Okay. I guess it's coming back to me.
Goes back to you.
The resolution that's in your packet is, is a resolution that's usually passed each, each year. These are the same names from last year. They can be changed. Typically, the, the mayor, the, the, well, with exception of the mayor, the mayor, the city clerk, city treasurer is on there, but it's a backup in case we need, there's a citizen, there's a city council member, and a deputy clerk is on there. As it relates to the court clerk, a specific name, because the court clerk has an obligation to sign particular texts. But this resolution can be amended, or you can adopt it as, as it is. But currently, the resolution you have for is one, 2023. It names Mayor of Christopher Franklin, City Clerk Sandy Ramses, Treasurer Derek Turner, City Council Member, Trinity Don Etherly, Senior Deputy Clerk Diane Tyler Johnson. And it says, City Council, Don, City Council Member Don Etherly, and Deputy Clerk Diane Tyler, are given limited six hours to establish as authorized signers in the absence of at least two primaries signed awards.
So, what is the pleasure of the body?
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept Resolution Oh One, Twenty Twenty Three, as vital as we all have a copy of.
Mrs. St. Columbia moves to adopt ordinance number
Resolution.
Resolution, I'm sorry, number one oh one.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Councilwoman Davis. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes, oh, yeah.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Six yes.
Yes. Right. Now, one thing I want to emphasize, especially for the public, as well as the new city council members, as it relates to checks, regardless of whether the mayor signs, every check has to be approved by the mayor before it's issued. The auditors look through to see whether there's something, some evidence that the mayor has authorized the issuance of a check. And I will come back and explain some things in a few moments about the purchase procedure, so that we can go forward. And you all can study the, the, the ordinances that we have, so you'll have an understanding of how spending is, is, is done. What is? Now, Friday, let's, let's turn to, in your packet, you included a base pay that was adopted Friday. If, if, if I may, Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Base pay. But understanding of the public, as well as the, the new city council members. Base pay was initially established when the city consolidated, for everyone to understand what positions are available in the city. When we say what position is available, the city council wanted to make sure that the mayor did not go out and create a position for anything. I will put a musician in the budget and pay him fifty thousand dollars. I know that sounds ridiculous, but the thing I'm saying is, the base pay ordinance creates every position in the city. However, the base pay ordinance does not fund any position. It is two documents that work together. The base pay simply establishes what is the pay for a person who would start the position, and it creates the position. If it's in the base pay, that does not mean that it is funded. The city council has to pass a budget in addition. If it's in the budget and in the base pay, then it is funded. However, if it's not, if it's in the budget and not in the base pay, it is not funded. If it's in the base pay and not in the budget, it's not funded. One document creates the position that provides what everybody has to understand what the starting salary would be. And one document funds it. And so, the base pay simply creates the position, so the city council would know, here are the positions that the city has that are available, and these is what we agree the positions. Mayor, you are not authorized to create in additional positions. I will give you a, a, for example, currently, the city is involved in litigation, because the outgoing mayor, with the, the former mayor, we have a human resource position that was in the former base pay. On the back wall, in, on the side of the building, it said that that person was the human resource officer. A lawsuit was filed because a person felt they were discriminated against. In the lawsuit, the mayor's office misled our attorneys and said that they were not human resources, that I created them for some other purpose. We're being sued, and the issue was, the base pay did not create a community coordinator position and the person being paid. Now, I want to point out in the base pay, one of the things, the city clerk has a duty in the base pay to ensure that no positions are paid, which are not in this base pay, because the city council establishes, these are the positions. Well, because the mayor put on the door and told all of the council, and the city clerk, and city treasurer, that this person was human resources, then allegedly, he complied with the base pay. But the mayor's office sent documents to the court and to everyone else, saying, well, this is a community, community coordinated position, and there's no communicated coordinated position in the base pay. Now, base pay creates a position. That was not a position at all. And so, this base pay has the, the effect of providing, the council would notice, the public would notice, and everyone would notice, here are the authorized position, because this council is one hundred percent in charge of the finance and creating the finances, and in charge of, of the real property. The mayor spends in, within that authority. But the base pay does not fund the position. When you pass a budget, you look at every department and say, this, is it in the base pay, is it in the budget? And the position is funded based on those two documents working together. So, though there was a base pay on this past Friday, it has not been funded, you all have not passed a two thousand twenty-three budget. And so, as we go forward, I wanted you all to understand that as we go forward. So, even if certain positions were created or added, until they're funded by this body, they can't be paid because they are not funded. Any questions about base pay? Now, I want to point out to you, these, the reason why I want to bring it up on the first page, ordinance forty of twenty twenty-two, for, that'll be on the transition of office. Our city policy is that the mayor must advertise for ten days for any position. On the agenda, you have a one-time waiver. The Arkansas Miss League is our rich management group. Arkansas Miss League represents the city, and most lawsuits involve discrimination and et cetera. And I represent people in non-discrimination lawsuits. I represent the city in those. When the mayor comes into office, each year, the mayor typically gets a waiver from the city council to hire department heads in certain positions. That's on the agenda today, so that the mayor is asking for waiver of the ten-day advertising, so he can hire certain people, so he can start his administration. And the positions in particular, the reason why I want you to look at the base pay, is there are offices under the, the mayor's office that are, that are here in the base pay that you have for you. And you have the department heads. You have a land for a person, water person, a street person, and then you have these positions that are here under the mayor's office. But Mayor Franklin is asking the body to consider giving him a one-time waiver from the policy manual, to give him authority to hire people, so he can start his administration. Elsewise, he has to advertise for two weeks, and it may be a part of the month, we can hire certain people for his administration. But you see the positions listed under here. Now, if the position hasn't been funded, because currently, just, just telling you as a caveat, you're operating on twenty twenty-two budget. So, the position isn't funded in the twenty twenty-two budget, then he can't hire the person. In twenty-two budget, there was no personnel officer, there was no compliance officer in that budget. There was no pass groundkeeper in twenty-two, twenty-two budget. Now, the city treasurer or city clerk can, can point out any other position that I may have permitted as it relates to it, but I just wanted to give you all that, that understanding. But what he's asking for was a waiver, so he can start his hiring, so he can move forward without having to wait a month to hire people. It will take two weeks and interviews, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Two weeks of advertising and paper, then interviews. In order number four, the position is on the mayor.
So
The questions, just a second, Dr. Miller. The questions that were, that were asked by Mr. Turner were what positions to the, the statement I made, where there was no pass groundkeeper, there was no, there was no compliance officer, and there was no, it was one other position that was not in last year's base pay. Personnel officer. He's looking at that. Dr. Miller, will you go ahead? You had a question.
So the, the, the request before the body is to permit, permission to enable the mayor to hire all of the positions listed in the, the base pay ordinance?
No, sir. Under, under the office of mayor in the base pay, if you look at your base pay on the floor, in the office of mayor, and he has three, there are three other department heads.
Okay.
That's not to say that he's going to change anyone. He just asked for the permission, just, just, as a matter, as a matter of course. He's sitting here, you can ask a question, but that's, that's discussion I have with him today. I see, he, you could ask him. He's sitting here. That's the question I had with him today. That's what I was saying.
I have a question. Ordinance forty is considerably changed from previous ordinance, we base pay ordinance we've had, had this first time that it's been presented to council. A considerable amount of raises has been put in here. I just wondered if our financial, if our budget, we haven't had, passed a budget, we don't know if we're going to have the money to make all this, these changes financially. I, I can't, I can't conceive making decision on this without having, looking at the finances of the city and looking at the budget in the future. The money, our income, to substantiate the spending of all this money.
You're not, let me, let me make it clear. You're not you're not funding, you hadn't funded any, what he, what he was asking in your December thirteenth meeting, you all met and you all extended twenty-two's budget, twenty twenty-two budget until through February first.
We're operating on that now.
Right.
We'll until the end of this month, if we don't have a new budget.
Right. And so, what he's actually doing is fund those, and currently, you, the only authorization he would have to pay is under the twenty-two and the two budget. He cannot pay under twenty twenty-three, because you have not He cannot pay under twenty twenty-three because you have not authorized a twenty twenty-three budget. And so he has been into the.
That's not what I'm going after. I'm going to, these, these increases in salaries in these positions changes.
But if, if, if you recall, Mr. Franklin, go ahead and finish your question.
Uh, uh, uh. I think it's a big change here financially, you know?
Okay, well.
And I, I personally can't, can't go along with that.
Mr. St. Columbia, as related to the changes, you have not funded any changes. Remember, the base pay creates a position. It does not fund the position until you pass the twenty twenty-three budget. And fund that position is not funded. The only funding authorization that Mr. Franklin has right now.
Explain how the ordinance forty, this ordinance forty is going to affect the changes.
I, I cannot say.
You understood what I said.
I couldn't hear what you said.
By increasing all these, this, this money, how can we financially handle that financially?
Mr. St. Columbia, you have not, you have not funded it. We know the base pay is crazy. It doesn't fund it. Until you decide to fund it, it's not funded. Right. Now, in particular, a, a, as it relates to it, I don't know what's the question you're asking about the base pay, but you are going to have budget workshops and talk about the budgets as you always do. You can, you can get it all done. The city treasurer's sitting there, the city clerk's sitting here. The questions about affordability and what you can afford and et cetera. The, the city treasurer's there and the city clerk's there. You all can have that robust conversation with them.
I can't see hiring people for, for jobs as we don't, you know, that we really don't know for sure that we're going to have the money to pay them. That's where I'm.
Mr. St. Columbia, we had a fairly healthy discussion about the, can you hear what I'm saying? We had a fairly healthy discussion about the money on Friday. And so I would ask you, which positions are you talking about? Because there's an, there was an explanation given for each position. Which, which one are you talking about?
Until I can further understand what's going on, I'm not going to be able to move in that direction.
I mean, I understand, but you specifically say raises in these positions and I'm just asking, which positions are you talking about?
What's your question?
Which, when you talk about raises, substantial raises in positions, which positions are you talking about?
I'm looking at the ordinance forty compared to the ordinance, uh, ordinance number twenty-five. I'm comparing ordinance number twenty-five with ordinance number forty that's been passed, say, last Friday. Looking at the two ordinances, a substantial amount of money differential in those two ordinances. And until I can understand those later, why? And if we can financially afford to increase those salaries, I, I can't go along with the what you're asking for. Did I make myself clear?
No, sir. No, sir. Because the base pay ordinance for people who don't have it in front of them, it lists positions. In order for, for it to be a substantial amount more, it's got to have more money in different slots. And I'm asking you, which particular position are you referring to?
Well, I'm not referring to any particular position, just to a bunch of them here. Until I have time to think about this and look into it a little more and look into the finances of the city, I can't take any action my part. Now, the rest of the council members can do whatever they wish to do, but I, I can't. I'm sorry.
You don't have to apologize. I wish you had come around the corner on Friday and said here in the room, you would have gotten the explanation.
Well, unfortunately, I was busy and I couldn't make it. I had other things I had to take care of.
I do understand you were in the building on Friday.
Do you think it may be possible that us new council members, we could be given that same information? Because we didn't really have the, we didn't have the privilege of getting that information either. We definitely want to support you, Mayor, anything to try and do to improve, improve the city. You know, but we're just now looking at this. We want to make sure we know where, where we're voting on before.
Well, I suggest, I might make my last statement. I suggest we move on to those course of action.
So for the, for the record, I understand what you're saying. The base pay has not been funded. The mayor is asking you all for him to be able to get a waiver relating to hiring people at last year's salary.
I can't permit that waiver until.
So you're saying the mayor's office, no position, may hire anybody for thirty days. The end of department heads or any other of these positions like code enforcement, et cetera, for thirty days and they remain vacant, not be paid, you know, that no work be done for thirty days. You want them to advertise and draw that, that's your position.
So the mayor is asking that we can hire people at last year's pay.
Yes.
Correct.
Ms. Harris, no mayor has come into office and been denied staff. Not a single one.
And that's, that's for the department heads such as the.
So we have a lot of positions that are empty now that need to be built immediately.
Yes, so that'd be like the police chief, the fire chief, water.
Your water supervisor, you've got code enforcement officers and et cetera. Currently, what I was trying to explain, until you fund the base pay, it is not funded. Currently, the body has voted only to authorize pay at last year's budget. Until you pass the twenty twenty-three budget, we are still doing everything in terms of last year's numbers. Last year's numbers were extended till February first, two thousand twenty-three. And the city council has obligation to pass a budget honorable for February first, twenty twenty-three. Furthermore, the mayor cannot spend a dime without there being appropriation. Now, this, prior to last year, December thirteenth, it extended the budget to February first, twenty twenty-three. But for purposes of this discussion, so that everyone have clarity. What he's asking is that the personnel manual requirements are advertised for two weeks and a local newspaper will be waived so he can start his administration. That's, that's all he's asking. He said last year, but the base pay, the reason I mentioned the best pay was to show you the type of positions. And the reason I said last year's budget did not have purchase officer, it did not have groundskeeper, didn't have other positions. So you understand where we were last year. And no one's trying to play fast and loose with you. He's just trying to start his administration and go forward. And if you want it specifically limited to last year's pay, last year's budget, if that makes you feel more comfortable, I suggest you put it in, in that frame so you'll have a clear understanding of what you've authorized tonight. But he's asking for a waiver so that he can begin his administration.
Mr. Val, can I ask you?
Yes, sir.
So, so what you're saying is you don't want to hire, so you're only hiring the positions that were in the previous base pay?
Correct. He listed on the door that, that, that he's asking for now. So he met with me earlier that he was saying, I'm not trying to play fast and loose with the council. I want them to have a chance to drink, to go to this because the discussion that he and I had was it is like drinking water from a fire. All the information the council is about to give.
Well, I, I guess what I'm trying to do for the council is clarify that the positions that were in, the new positions that were in the, the, the base pay that was passed Friday, the new positions, you're not asking to hire those positions.
Not until the twenty twenty-three budget is passed.
Okay.
You all have not adopted, have not had any discussions about the twenty-three, twenty-three, the three budget.
So any of the, the positions that were, that, that left or were terminated or they decided to leave, those that I want to.
Right, alright. The own-up spending authorization the mayor has at this point is based on twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-two numbers. Well, I mean, that's reasonable.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council and those of you in the audience. There's just one statement I want to make to encourage the council to grant the waiver. Right now, we have a boil order in West Ham. We don't have a water manager. The second person in line retired December thirty-first. He's been helping us, but he's not employed. And we need somebody in place to deal with the boil order. You know, don't want to fix the boil order, that's your choice, but I'd ask that you consider that as you go forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Val. At the pleasure of the body, what would you all like to do?
I'm moving that we grant the waiver.
Mr. Anthony moved that we grant the waiver.
Was asking for, for comfortability of those who had questions. Does your motion include that the people are hired based on the twenty twenty-two appropriations and twenty twenty-two positions?
I'm moving that we grant the waiver based on twenty twenty-two appropriations, positions and the authority that we gave in December, on December thirteenth, to extend the twenty twenty-two budget till February the first.
Mr. Anthony moves to.
To, uh, grant the waiver and have the people hired. It's based on the twenty twenty-two budget to appropriate the funds and the positions.
Ms. Davis takes the motion. Any discussion?
I don't know that I'm fully understanding. Okay, okay. You said that this simply gives a base ordinance that states what the possible jobs would be.
Yes, ma'am.
Doesn't mean it's funded, doesn't mean that we're going to pay this or that it's out there and available. That would come with.
Twenty twenty-three budget, yes.
Correct. But you said that the purchasing officer, the compliance officer and the parks and groundskeeper are new positions?
They would be new positions in, in the new base pay.
The only thing I'm uncomfortable about is if I've not looked at, because I just got here. If I've not looked at the budget, if I've not looked at where we are financially, if I've not looked at any data documentation, I wasn't here obviously for the last meeting. I don't know whether or not these three positions are even doable. And so I, I don't understand what you're saying. You're just saying that they could be there and be available.
But Mr. Anthony's motion is at twenty twenty-two levels. That's, that's, that's not talking about that ordinance. He's talking about the, the former base pay ordinance that you had, the positions you had last year. His motion is about that, not about the one you have before you now.
There's no money for those positions.
There's been no money allocated for those positions you have there. And so prior to that base pay, you had a base pay that was in effect, that did not include those three positions. And what the mayor is, is not trying to hire new positions, the old positions you already had. He's talking about hiring people into those old positions at the former pay.
Can I say this a different way, but make it simple? Some, some people quit last week. And this allows him to replace the people who quit at that previous pay. It doesn't do anything. No, 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 we didn't have one.
No.
We didn't have one.
We're not talking about that, or in a sense.
We, we're not even, we're not even talking about that base pay ordinance. We're talking about the, okay, for example. I assume, I just heard that the water, the water manager, he, he quit. If we don't get somebody who's licensed to run their department, we'll be under a boil order forever. He needs to replace that person and it replaces that person at the previous person's pay. The, the, the chief took, chief of police took a new job in Little Rock. The only way he can replace that person, the chief, is if we grant him a waiver, but it doesn't do anything under that base pay. And it's, it's under last year's funding. So essentially, if you had the money to do it in twenty twenty-two, that's all you're using is what you had in twenty twenty-two. So if we didn't have the money to have a police chief or a water department head in twenty twenty-two, we, we were in trouble in twenty twenty-two. So you're just replacing people who left. There's some other staff people and employees who, who decided they didn't want to remain anymore and they, and they left. But they may be essential to our day-to-day operations. And if he can't replace those people for the next thirty days, we'll be under a boil order. Then I have a chief of police. So he's just saying, let me replace those people. Those new positions, we would have to fund those when we adopt our twenty twenty-three budget, which is what we'll be working on going forward between now and February first.
So for us new people to help us out, because obviously we're a little slow. Can you, can you just list out the, the positions? That way we know where we're voting on. So we know what, yeah, we're saying these are essential positions that need to be filled, so we know.
What I've asked the city treasurer to do is to go get the previous base pay ordinance. So you can look at it. And so you can look at it and fund those positions, give a waiver based on those positions. So we will have a co-mingling of the two.
Yes, sir.
So you can see exactly what you already had.
Yes, sir.
Now, this that you have now is going towards the twenty twenty-three budget. Now, I misspoke about one thing. The, the compliance officer that's in this base phase is just a name thing. Used to be human resource officer. Uh, the purchase officer that's in twenty twenty, while we're waiting on the city clerk. In our, while we're waiting on the city treasurer, I'm sorry, I, I misspoke again, city treasurer. While we're waiting, the one thing I want you to understand, if you look at ordinance number twenty-four, while we're waiting on the city treasurer to bring the base pay, look at the order number twenty-four dash oh six. I asked the clerk, madam clerk, to provide this to everyone. The former city council member had this, but the current one do not. I've advised the mayors in the past and city councils that we need a purchasing person to alleviate many of the expenditures that we have because a purchase agent is supposed to be going through, looking through to make sure that everything operates under requisition. The way the, yes, sir, Mr. St. Columbia.
I'm having a hard time, you know, I, I told you. I guess if it wasn't for this ordinance forty, uh, and with these higher prices of, of salaries and all, I wouldn't be as concerned about the movement of, of employing new people and creating new jobs. What is the status of the, of the, uh? I'm, I'm looking at, at ordinance forty and then ordinance twenty-five. I think that was the number of the other ordinance. You know, such a big change in, in the, well, money.
Mr. St. Columbia, one of the things about it, you're familiar with the process. And you, you are very familiar with the process. We've gone on over and over and over and over again. And I'm not saying you're being disingenuous, but I'm saying you're very familiar with the process. You know, the, the thing, the thing I'm going to say is that, but that's last year specifically. What question did you have? And you said you didn't know what question you had. And that was what we were trying to do as you, as a, as an elder member of this council, a seasoned member of this council who's been here since two thousand and five and been dealing with the base pay ordinance system every time. You are keenly aware how it operates and you are keenly aware of what it does and what its functions are. As you are not a neophyte, you are not new to this, you understand it thoroughly. As you are not a neophyte, you are not new to this, you understand it thoroughly. While you may be finding that you don't understand it, you understand it thoroughly. So the specific question is, what questions do you have?
Like, okay. I understand this ordinance forty was established Friday.
Okay.
And nothing's been said tonight about the veto.
The, the mayor rescinded the veto. Yes, Mayor Smith is not on the mayor. The mayor here rescinded the veto and gave me reasons that you emailed about it.
Yeah, I got the letter that you said, but.
So his veto was not involved because this mayor said he didn't, he, he didn't agree.
I, I can't understand why that veto was Nolan Boyd.
Because Mayor Kevin Smith's authority ended December thirty first, eleven fifty nine P M. And his authority ended eleven fifty nine P M on December thirty first.
I'm having a hard time understanding why changes were made so quickly and the way they were done, and this council, this council now has to live with whatever was made.
Mr. 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 St. Columbia. You're very familiar with the process, and you know it has to be funded.
That's right.
You know it hasn't been funded. You know that this body has a right to vote on all of it, whether proven or to even unwin the base pay. You are keenly aware of that. So Mr. Mr. St. Columbia, while you're finding ignorance and a lack of understanding. Now, you've been here since the beginning, and you, I've talked to you about this numerous times, and you know that. And I'm not hurling any accusations at you, but the thing I'm trying to tell you is you understand the process. And you sat in the mayor's office on Friday while this body was meeting.
I was in the mayor's office.
Yeah, well, they, they were sitting here. They ran here. You, you were right at the mayor's office, right?
Late Friday, after this meeting was over, I guess. I don't know. Well, I, I don't know. Okay, well, what that got to do with the, the difference in the two ordinances?
What it had to do is you're finding ignorance about this.
Why didn't we do all that some other time ago? Why did we wait till Friday?
Mr. St. Columbia, you know that.
And we're saying it's not a, a proper veto. I, I don't understand all it.
Well, let me pause, let me.
Too much going on.
Did Mayor Smith turn in on December thirty first?
Sir?
Did Mayor Smith turn in on December thirty first?
At midnight, December thirty first, yes.
Okay. Was Christopher Franklin sworn in as the mayor?
Right. He's now the mayor, and I'm backing.
And he's.
I'm gonna support him.
And he rescinded the veto.
Well, I don't, I don't know if he has a right to veto it. I, I've never seen it. But I've been here a long time, and I've never seen that happen before.
Well, I, I've never seen a mayor just try to issue a veto in eleven, eleven P M on the last night of his most special evening.
It's got to be something to all this.
The law says. Let me tell you what the law says.
I'm, I'm opening the book to find out why.
Mr. St. Columbia, the law is very simple. The mayor has a right to issue a veto, and he must leave it before the body within five days. Uh, he was lived in the body, he had to accept for the five days lived before the body next to the council meeting.
Have you consulted the municipal league on this?
I don't need to. I would know the law on it. And here's the thing. Are you denying that this man has authority to, 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 to act as mayor? Are you denying he has the authority to act as mayor?
Oh, he has the authority to act as.
So who has the authority to exercise the veto today?
I don't know. I, that's.
Who is the mayor? When Mayor Smith, when Mayor Smith's office.
I'm only one of this group. I am not going to go anywhere without understanding.
I'm not trying to get, get into it, but the thing about it is.
I would feel more comfortable knowing, seeing something and writing, and writing what the process is, because I would be there.
A veto?
Well, not, not so much a veto, but more, more so, uh, I mean, just what the legality is or what the, what the authority is to rescind a veto. I don't know.
Well, the, maybe, I, let me, I keep trying to simplify this. Veto is not an act, it's a process. The veto starts if the mayor issues his written, written veto within five days of the act taking place.
Council can override the veto.
We haven't made it there yet, alright? So the mayor issues his veto, which he had a legal right to do. A veto is not completed until he lays it before the council at the next regular council meeting. The next regular council meeting, he's not the ma- he's not the mayor anymore. So if you think of it, if, if Mister Franklin vetoes some action by this body, and then decides the next day that he changes his mind, I would say that the mayor can't change his mind and take his veto back. They understand this, the veto is the power of the mayor.
Yes.
It's not the power of Christopher Franklin or Kevin Smith or Jay Halliwell. It's the power of the mayor. When Kevin Smith ceased to be the mayor, it goes to Christopher Franklin. He says, I don't wanna do it anymore. It's just that simple. He pulls it back. He does not have to present it to the council, and if he doesn't present it to the council, because he has to present it to the council to give the council an opportunity to override it. His veto is not completed until he presents it to the council. He says, I don't wanna present it. Yes, sir.
Does this council, this county have the power to override the veto?
Not that one.
Well, let, let, let me be.
Now, listen, if it was presented.
Has a power to override any veto, whether it's by this mayor, that mayor, or the other mayor.
You're asking a simplistic question. If the, if the veto is presented to the council, the council has the right to override.
The veto needs to be presented to us.
You can't make him present it.
Right.
Why, why?
Cause you're not.
The, the issue is this.
So it's got to come from him to veto.
Veto is his power, not yours, or anybody. It's his power.
It has to come from the office of the mayor.
Okay.
And under.
I have the power, I have, I have this much power to represent the people in my ward, a- and that's what I'm gonna do, and I, I at this point cannot see the difference in all this money changing. And I'm not gonna take any action on anything until I start seeing how we're gonna pay for all these things and how we.
Let, let me pause for a second. Ladies and gentlemen, the gallery, we need to, uh, tone down some because we're recording it. You can hear your voices on there. We have problems here in the executive meeting. Mr. St. Columbia, uh, one thing I wanna say is this. Mr. Uh, city clerk, Mr. Treasurer has given you last year's base pay. But Mr. Franklin is simply asking, it's based on last year's budget, based on the base paid that existed before Friday, for him to have a waiver to hire the people that have left. You have, you've had a crisis over the past two or three weeks, as Mr. Valier said, and Mr. Ethel said, relating to your water. The mayor sent a letter, the, the, uh, regarding the, the water department, where you no longer have a water department head. You don't have a person licensed to operate the water department. The other person that was second in charge already retired effective the twenty ninth. And last year, you voted several times relating to funding the budget and approving everything relating to last year's budget and pay. He's only asking to bring in people to replace people and waive the process to ten days required to publish in a paper to hire them based on last year's budget. That's all he's asking. He's not asking about the base pack. Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
I'm just kind of reiterating what you're saying, though. I think they kind of just need to realize that the mayor already has the power to hire these people.
Right.
It's, it's been authorized, it's been appropriated, and it's in the budget. I mean, it's in the base pay. The only thing he's asking, but, uh, policy requires us to have, uh, advertise for ten days. The only thing you, he already has the power to hire the people. But he just needs ten days. He wants the city council to waive the ten days.
The city council sets policy. And unless he gets a waiver, one time waiver from the city council, he has to go through the process of advertising and all that. You can't bring a new police chief, your chief is gone, he's gone to Little Rock. Can't bring a water.
He got all this power, and I, I acknowledge it. He's got the power to do it. Let's hire people, we can go about our business.
But he needs a waiver, or else he has to advertise.
I'm not gonna move on that until I get the show straight.
The only issue we're talking about is personnel handbooks that requires you, the city, to advertise for the positions for two consecutive weeks in a local paper so that we can hire people. He's only asking for you all to waive that requirement one time so we can start his administration. And, uh, they will be hired based on last year's number, that no pay increases, that none of that. You have not appropriated anything beyond twenty twenty two numbers of budget. You all have not adopted anything that gives them the authority to pay people based on a larger salary, because you haven't passed a funding mechanism, a budget, to give the people pay raises. I appreciate your concerns. I applaud your concerns. I applaud your due diligence. But what we're saying is, it's based on twenty twenty two numbers, twenty twenty two personnel, and a waiver of the book to give him to hire a police chief and any other person that he needs to get the administration started.
So, turn me down.
Yes, ma'am.
The waiver is for which positions?
It is for the, the vacant positions. I don't know every position, uh, but I'd have to ask the mayor what the positions are. But you have a fire chief in each position, you have a water. Police chief, I'm sorry. Thank you. Police chief, you have a water, uh, position. Uh, you have a code enforcement position. Uh, you have a chief of staff position. You have a water department clerk.
What, what about the, uh, the, the water department employees? Did they, did they resign, or did they come back?
Most of, mo- most of the people in the water department, the people, most people came back to work. Uh, I have not, when I reached out to the department heads, it's more than like eighty percent of people that work. So I'll be with some of the departments tomorrow to figure out who didn't return, but majority, from what I saw today from going to each department, uh, most people returned back to work.
They have a discussion that you all are not privy to. Discussion, Mr. Ethel asks, water department who, who returned. There were numerous people from the water department that were fired by the mayor prior to the boil order and the water situation. And many of those people left. You had the assistant, uh, water manager. He, he was in the process of retirement. The general water manager retired. The general water manager says he's not coming back, is what Mr. Franklin told me. Your assistant water manager retired. Many of your personnel were fired by the mayor prior to this water issue. And you have positions like that are vacant that need immediate filling. And that's why he needs a waiver.
Can, can, can you state their salaries so I'll understand? It's gonna be the same as the old?
Yes.
Ending motion, and then maybe I can see it, but.
We just gave it to you, Mr. St. Columbia. Every person around the table has got their ordinance. We just gave you, it's, it, I'm not trying to add anything. We're still working on the same.
That's my concern.
I promise you, I, I played it out there to you, it's nothing to hide. Everything is out there.
Mr. St. Columbia's based on twenty twenty two budget.
I'm only one vote. He's got a lot of votes.
Yeah, but there's a motion, Mr. St. Columbia.
I don't know how, listen, let, let me be clear for the public, for everyone. Prior, when the mayor was leaving, the mayor went through and hired, and we're fired, and we're from ten to fifteen people from the departments and, and said that that was reduction in force. The city council never voted on a reduction in force. He just arbitrarily fired people. And so there are many holes within many departments that need to be filled. And many positions within the city that are not operating, because we would have to advertise for two weeks. The mayor intentionally fi- fired some people. In fact, uh, there are some employees that, that were department heads, and he let go. And I cannot talk about all the specifics without getting into personnel discussions, but there are wide gaps in certain departments that need to be filled. And the water department is one of the major ones. And then, uh, there hadn't been any changes to department head to my knowledge, that's up to the mayor. But we're talking about twenty twenty two numbers that no increases. We're talking about twenty twenty two budget. And that's it. He, he, this mayor only has the appropriation for twenty twenty two. Before any of that that you all are talking about can be funded, that would have to be a twenty twenty three budget passed. And you're gonna have a robust, healthy, well-informed discussion about it. You're gonna have meetings about it. And so that is what we're saying, and the practical effect of not doing it is, okay, we'll just leave the position open, and we'll advertise, and the mayor take thirty days to hire all the people, and whatever happens, happens in the thirty days. That's, that's the practical position that the city would be in.
And it might be boiling water for a couple of weeks.
So, you understand that. So the fire chief, for instance, with this waiver, would come in at the fifty five, the police chief at the forty eight five, the code enforcer at the thirty, uh, the co, uh, chief of staff at thirty two, which is what this base pay ordinance.
That's the previous base pay that you're reading? Yes.
Yes.
Listen, Mr. Turner, just, just hand you. Those are the numbers that we're talking about at this moment.
So there's a, there's a motion in the second on the floor. Madam clerk, would you please? Well, you can read the motion, I'm sorry.
Alright, the motion, the motion was to grant a waiver to not advertise for the ten day period in order to hire certain persons based on the twenty twenty two base pay ordinance in vacant positions. Ms. Harris? Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Ms. Miller? Mr. St. Columbia?
No.
Dr. Miller? Ms. Miller?
No.
Have three yes and three nos.
Now, for the sake of those who voted, the mayor just voted yes. The mayor could vote at, at any time if most need to pass, anything if the vote was three to three. Then it certainly had to be three to three. You need four votes to, for any measure to pass. Uh, the vote could have been three to two, but, but the mayor's authorized to vote. He votes yes, is what, what he just said. That's for the sake of the listener. The mayor's authorized to vote anytime a vote is necessary. So the ten day waiver has passed based on twenty twenty two budget, based on twenty twenty two salaries. Now, one other thing that the body needs to do, you want to look at budget, uh, meetings, when you're gonna have budget meetings. Mr. Turner has a proposed budget, I believe, Mr. Turner, I will yield to you relating to discussions of regard to twenty twenty three budget.
I've, uh, given you guys, uh, a preliminary or tentative budget for twenty twenty three. The mayor, the, the former mayor, uh, was supposed to submit a budget by December first, but what he did was just submit the old, uh, twenty twenty two budget. And so what I did was I went through and, uh, kinda like updated the salaries to what they were in twenty twenty two and. Okay. And so what I did was I updated the, uh, salaries to what they were in twenty twenty two. Uh, the debt service, uh, the, city vehicle payments, the fire truck, you know, the, the, car notes and the, uh, no sound, the fire trucks and the landfill equipment and uh, did some projections for the bills and things like that. Um, I, I didn't add any of the, uh, the new positions that were created on, uh, Friday. Uh, I didn't know how, you know, what city council was gonna do today or in the future, so uh, those positions haven't been added, but, uh, doing budget workshops, we can, I guess all those things will be discussed at that time. Uh, so this is just pretty much just a preliminary budget. For you guys to look over over the next couple of days. I'm not sure exactly when you guys wanna have budget workshops. I'm available every day from this day until February first. Anytime you wanna meet, uh, just let me know. I guess, I don't know when you wanna discuss, when you wanna have the first budget workshop. Uh, but from this day forward, I'll, I'll be available until February first, till we get it, you know, uh, till we get it done. That's the deadline. We have to get it done by, you have to get it done by February first. You have to get it done by February first. So.
Can't get it done by February first. Or extend the budget we have, have. We can extend it beyond.
You, you, you have to, you have to approve, you have to approve a budget by February, by February.
Budget, did you include the, uh, raises over in?
No, sir. None of the new positions.
New positions or the salaries?
No, sir. No, sir. I didn't know what, what the council would do today and going forward, so I didn't waste the time to put it in.
That's what I have to, and then I need to know when we have our budget, what our income is gonna be for twenty twenty-three.
Well, those projections that are in this preliminary budget are the projections that I. Have for twenty twenty-three. So the.
So the income?
Yeah, the revenue projections are, except for, um, the only thing I may need to correct is the. Street fund, I, I'm waiting on the municipal league to send me some updated, uh, per capita numbers on the, uh. Street turning back. Yeah, so I'm waiting on the, uh, rates that they'll be paying per capita for the, uh, street fund turn back. But I already done the projections for, uh, sales tax, property tax and all of that, so. Uh, there, there will be some changes, but the primary changes I'm guessing will be with the salaries, the positions of the salaries. Everything else, I, I don't foresee any, uh, problems with any of the other line items, but there may be.
Okay. When we have our, our budget workshops, and we'll need to have several of them, and we'll need to. To discuss each department individually, uh, on actual, uh, funding.
Yes. Yes, sir.
So we'll need to know exactly what we had spent in twenty twenty-two, so we're going actual, not estimated.
Yes. I, I've also given you, um, the new council members and, uh. The returning council members. I've, I've, uh, put the November, uh, Treasury's report.
Yeah, I said.
And so a lot of the numbers that I use for the expenditures, I, I've used those numbers to project. The expenditures for, uh. Yes, sir. Do we, do we have any suggestion dates that you all would like to meet for a budget workshop? I mean.
I can meet on Friday or Saturday.
I just, why don't we just throw out next Tuesday? We don't have a regular meeting scheduled. That gives all new members a chance to look at the budget, look at our financial documentation. And then we can.
I don't have to be.
We can start on next Tuesday. Regular meeting time of our council meetings, just my suggestion.
And, and I'll get you another budget, uh, as soon as the, the municipal league gives me that information. And I think there may be. Some, um, salary changes that I, that I need to make. I know we have some. Uh, department hairs that left, and so the new department hairs that we hire will have to come in at the base pay. And I think a couple of them I still have at the old rate. So I, I'll make small changes like that. And then I'll get you those, uh, I'll get you the new, uh, budget in a couple of days. With the updated updates. Anytime I update it, I'll send, send you guys a new budget.
I'm on the way.
Tuesday at five.
Tuesday, five. And, and also, uh, to the new council members, the old council members already know this. You can. If you have any questions about bills and the financial questions, um, just give me a call. You can call me at any time. You can give a city cell phone number or a personal cell phone number, uh, email me or just come back to office if you have a question. Or you need any additional information.
List of everybody's phone numbers now, all the new members and everybody, uh, emails and all that. Mr. Treasurer, you're doing the, the payroll now. What are you basing paychecks right now on this? The old or the new?
Mr. Saint Columbia, you hadn't passed a budget. You're operating off twenty twenty-two.
So we're based on the old, the, the information that's in that preliminary budget that I, that I just gave you. Those are current salaries and some adjustments. Like I said, some had to be made for some department hairs that won't be returning. I know they won't be returning, so I took those back down to the, where I should have taken back down to the base pay.
Yeah.
But I did not. So I know that I will be making some changes.
I like to be, uh, uh, uh.
When I send you the new budget, I will put in the email what the changes are.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Now, for the new council members, what you done, Mr. Turner, I'm sorry.
Yes.
New council members, budget workshop is just a term of art. Budget workshops are city council meetings. If at any point you're all satisfied that you're complete with the budget, you can adopt a budget then. You don't have to have another city council meeting. So you send the city council meeting. They should be open to the public and they should be recorded on the Arkansas Freedom of Information Act. Uh, one thing I want to tell you all, you're in, you're in a new environment being an elected official. Uh, two of you cannot meet together and talk city business without notifying the press. In that vein, uh, one thing that I want to clear up about Friday, and there was statements that the meeting was not legal. However, the press was notified of all the, all of the meetings and the press only needs a two-hour notice of city council meeting. And more than, it was three hours and a sign, especially called meeting can be called by three city council members or by the mayor. Uh, three city council members did call the meeting. The press was notified. They had two-hour notice. So everything that occurred at that meeting was within the law. It was not an illegal meeting. It was a meeting that was done. And the city council can call special call meetings. Three, you say we'll have a city council meeting. Three, you all can come to clerk's office one by one and say, sign a document, say we're calling a special call city council meeting. You have a special call city council meeting. It has to be recorded in some form, uh, under the Arkansas Freedom of Information Act. I would also, uh, caution you also about emails you send, et cetera. Because your emails, you're a public official, and that may be something to fit the Freedom of Information Act. If you're talking about city business. And so, um, all the emails you send. Be, be conscious that they, they could potentially be made public by someone asking for them if you're talking about city business. Cause any, even email that decided having meetings. So I wanted to inform you all of that before you go forward. But again, the offshore schedule is, uh, uh, workshop, as it says, a term of art. It is a city council meeting. And you all can go forward and do some. I think that you all said your next workshop is Tuesday at five. Okay, for the, for the sake of, of the, the new city councilman and the public, the mayor's spending authority is five thousand dollars. Uh, or seventy-five hundred dollars for bidding. Uh, Arkansas Code Interstate fourteen fifty-eight, three oh three. About a fi- a five thousand dollar limit. This mayor cannot spend but five thousand off. We come to this body. Uh, and the problems that we had with the previous administration, he's not to break that down into a series of separate contracts. Uh, he's supposed to, if it's gonna be twenty thousand, he can't break it down to, uh, forty-eight hundred, forty-eight hundred, forty-eight, twenty, forty-eight hundred. Uh, the clerk is working on a report on that, and the previous man did that quite frequently, and I kept trying to ask about. But Los Valley were just, were saying that the city had a notice. Someone just, just, uh, emailed that the, the city needs to appropriate eighty thousand dollars to fix something with the water.
From Jones Hydro Service.
Okay.
Who's been, who's been working on our waters.
Jones Hydro Service have been working on our waters, our whales, uh, just for understanding of the water whales. Uh, for those who grew up in rural communities, we understand that, that were, there used to be pumps that you pump water out of a whale. And that's how it's, it's, it's done. For cities, we have large whales with pumps in those whales. And the water is pumped up from an aquifer. As a, as a preacher, I believe that those aquifers were filled by Noah's flood. And the water is beneath earth. And the water is being pumped up, but it has to be treated before it comes to our house. As part of the water issue, Jones Hydro works on those water pumps. When the crisis first started, the pumps are supposed to pump approximately nine hundred gallons per minute. They were down as low as a hundred and fifty gallons per minute. The water is pumped up and is treated, and the pressure goes down by usage and by lack of volume of being pumped up. And Jones Hydro have been working on it. And the previous mayor, without coming to council, went ahead and just, just authorized. Them to go to work. And so at this point, they've sent an eighty thousand dollar bill and they said they need that, uh, to move forward. There is no purchase order or anything that hasn't been presented to this mayor, this city council. Or this, uh, city treasurer, city clerk, or to me to review, but they're asking for eighty thousand dollars to move forward. To, to continue work on the, on the pumps. Is that accurate?
Miss there, you recognize.
Again, we don't have a water manager. And Jeff, uh, Patterson, who was the water manager before. Tony Scruggins has retired. And so I've been coordinating with Jeff Patterson. Who referred me to Jeff Jones with Hydro, uh, Jones Hydro Services. And the email they sent me late this evening basically said they started in April testing the whales. Then this council in October authorized nineteen thousand dollars, which has been paid. Then in November, the council authorized them to proceed with treatment of the whale. And that invoice was thirty-two thousand, four hundred and five thousand and eight cents, which has not been paid. And then December the thirteenth, they sent the estimate for twenty-four thousand dollars. And that's the meeting where the council met and asked the mayor, do we need to have a special call meeting? Because the director wasn't there at that meeting, and the special call meeting never happened. And so this money has never been authorized, the twenty-four thousand dollar estimate. Part of the reason wasn't authorized, the council asked, what is the twenty-four thousand dollars for? And so December the twenty-sixth, he said, recall to test well number ten. This well has continued to decline since our April recommendation. And it was agreed by Tony Scruggins and Jeff Patterson that the quickest temporary solution to try to gain ground during the freeze. Was to install a rental pump back in the well nine, and this would provide three hundred to four hundred gallons per minute. And December the twenty-seventh, they installed a submersible pump in well nine. Now, the estimated cost for that is about eighteen thousand dollars. And so, and then they'll provide. A, as a service to the city, their pump for thirty days, no charge. After that, it's fifteen hundred dollars per month to use their pump. So if you add it together, you got thirty-two thousand dollar invoice, a twenty-four thousand dollar estimate. And eighteen thousand dollars that they're saying that they need to get well nine. And this is one of the wells that we're having problems with. But well nine is the well that is feeding the stand pipe. Stand pipe is the water tank that sits on the ground, like you see at Reservoir Hill. This one is at North Ridge, uh, and Tenth Street over there. And it feeds basically all the people in West Town. And until that pump is full at sixty-eight feet. And you get two clear samples, uh, that sent to the Department of Health, we're gonna be on the boil order. And part of the reason we're on the boil order is that we're using water quicker than we're getting it up in the pump and in the stand pipe. Or whatever you call that thing, the blue thing on North Ridge. So you all can discuss this tonight and, and authorize money. Or you can have a special call meeting, or we stay on the boil order. Thank you.
So what is the wishes of the council?
We need to resolve that problem.
Can I, can I, can I, can I get a motion, Mr. St. Columbia?
I'll make a motion, pay those bills and get that pump. That's that, that well nine, and that's one that.
That's well nine.
I tried to get the old council to go along and do it then, and they wouldn't do it.
Questions, but nobody answered for them at that time.
Yeah.
We're at a point where it's too late to ask questions and get answers. We begin it fixed, so we have a boil order. That's where we are. We need to get it fixed.
Mr. Saint Columbia has made a motion.
Second, Dr. Miller?
Let's move on.
Discussion? Madam clerk, will you please follow up?
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Miller? Pardon?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Saint Columbia, Mr. Saint Columbia, okay. Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Six yes.
Now, one thing I would point out to the whole body, we were just given this tonight. I have not provided ordinance because it just came. You're gonna adopt this by ordinance next meeting. Now, for the record, the nineteen thousand that they talked about in April was appropriated by the council. The thirty-two thousand was not brought back to the council. Twenty-four thousand were brought to the council on December the thirteenth and table. And so all of this money, we, we'll, Mr. Saint Columbia is partially correct, this council did vote when it was presented to them about it. The thirty-two thousand, twenty-four thousand, eighteen thousand are just being explained this evening. And so that's why it hadn't been appropriated, but we still need to do it by ordinance. We'll bring it back at the next city council meeting. And so when you see the number seventy-four thousand, uh, one hundred and, and, uh, forty dollars or forty-five dollars. That's what it's for. It's for Jones Hydro. You already voted it, so we can move forward so that they can pay it. Now, the current status, the, the water company is still, uh, bleeding money. Water company has not paid sanitation rate in how many months?
Five.
Five months. What that means is when the citizens pay their water bills.
They've been keeping.
Uh, the water company is supposed to take their money just as a conduit and to give it to the city's general fund. Water company is not separate from its general fund. The water company, uh, collects approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a month on behalf of the city. But in the past four years, it's always run four months, five months, seven months, eight months behind.
Right.
And that's been an issue. It has been a management issue, and that's still where we are. And that's part of the reason why I thank you all for going and get, authorized the mayor to, uh, try to get some management person here. So that we can begin to arrest that fall. Uh, and that is the primary issue that we're having as far as finance. But that's, if you take five months, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, that's how much the water company is indebted to the city general fund at this very point. Okay? And then, as you heard also, the city must fix the issue with pumps. We need to get new pumps and et cetera. Uh, last year, the water manager said specifically at that podium, that the city could have fixed one of the pump for thirty-three thousand. We, we spent rental of eight hundred thousand dollars to fix a thirty-three thousand dollar problem. That's a fact. Mr. Saint Columbia has not said yes, Mr., Mr. Davis and Mr. Ethel, uh, wherever, and Mr. Franklin. That is a fact. That's not something we're making up. That's not political expressions against the former measure, mayor. But that is where we find ourselves. And you will get greater information. That's the city treasurer. Go forward. I've asked him to give you a detailed report. So that when you all meet, you all will make informed decisions. We want you to be as informed as possible. To make the most sound decisions you can, because your primary duty is the finances of the city. Now, the previous administration, I've advised this mayor privately, I'm telling the public, don't hide nothing from the city council. The previous mayor, he did that consistently. And I've talked to him every day and told him, don't hide anything from the city council. The previous mayor would not give this body, when there was a, from the time of the, uh. Tornado activity that happened in eastern Arkansas, where, where, where the church was damaged, Centennial Church. The mayor declared emergency, which I told him was not legal. Wait, Mr. Saint Columbia, I asked this body, asked over and over again, give us the information on water. The mayor refused to do so. He asked over and over and over again. I've asked this mayor, the city clerk, and the city treasurer to make sure this body is informed on everything. So that you all can make great decisions. And that's not an issue that I'm gonna be consistent. I told the mayor, I'm not gonna put up with all this. And I told the clerk and the, and the, uh, and the treasurer. That they need to hold the mayor accountable, the mayor need to hold them accountable, and we all going to be clear about what we're doing. Yes.
Thank you, sir. Don't we have a grant to take care of that finances that now?
But if you, if you came, if you, listen, Mr. St. Columbia, as related to it, eventually you will have a grant to take care of some of it. But it doesn't give us the right to just waste the citizen.
No, no, that's why I said we don't need to kick the can down the road.
These people who have watched this meeting work hard, they earn their money. While they retired, they worked, they, they earned it. And they wanna spend their money in a way that they have confidence that this body is using it correctly.
We have a grant now to take care of it. We need to get it done.
Yes. But the thing about it is, we would have millions of dollars that we wouldn't have needed the grant for if it were done properly. And what my charge to everybody around this table is to. And what my charge to everybody around this table is to do it properly.
Okay. Well, well, I got two things. Oh, to the council, I just want you all to know, listen, to the public, I have nothing to hide. I was put here to work with you all. What I don't understand, we all gonna learn it together. There, I have, I have no hidden agenda, nothing. I came from where you all sit to the head of the table. What I'm trying to do is something different. I'm trying to change hell. This city is on life support. And with your help, we can stabilize this city. I have nothing that I want to hide, do secrets, nothing. I'm, I'm asking every citizen in everybody in this room, if hell and a failed, it's because of us. I have no difference, nothing. This is my home. I bear my wife here. I'm raising my children here. I have a vested interest here. So I'm not gonna hide nothing from running you all. I ain't gonna pull out no tricks, I know bags. I wanna work with you all. I don't wanna fight. Whatever you need, we need together. And I'm telling you all, the door's open. The mayor's office is open to anyone for anything. I will be here from eight to four unless my little people call and have to go check on my little, with my children. And I just want y'all to know that this is our community. It's time now for us to take it and run with it. I have nothing. I'm not gonna bash the past administration. That's that. This is a new day. The sun has risen on us. There's new people at the table, and I wanna work with you all. And secondly, my last thing, Sunday at the swearing ceremony, I misquoted it because I was a little nervous, as we are sometimes. I said, I said, you gotta go through me to get to God, which you all know that that's not true. I misspoke, but I said, you need to, you gotta go through God to get to me. And so, you know, we got critics out here gonna try to just bring up anything. But I'm a believer of the faith. I love God. I wouldn't be here after losing a brother, a sister, a wife, and a child. My faith is heavily strong in God. I sit here as a man who loves Jesus Christ. And he has put me here. And I am so grateful. And I want you all to know that there's nothing that we can't do together. I bring nothing here, but it's my humble heart. And I want you all to work with me. And let's work together and keep encouraging the best that we can. We got several things going on. Our hospital's in trouble. Our school's in trouble. I wanna work with everybody on those issues. I'm not hiding nothing. I'm coming out the gate swinging. So if you're in my way, I'm knocking a home run or we're gonna knock one together. So I want you all to realize that I'm not doing anything. I'm trying to make this place better. The door is open. You can come by any means necessary because we're here. And that's all I gotta say. Mr. St. Columbia, will you do the pleasure?
Sir.
Would you do the pleasure? Move with him?
Oh, I'll move to adjourn. Yeah. I'd like to say one other thing.
Yes, sir.
I think this council wants to support you and I, I, I've been on here a long time. I've been here with you and you sat right here with me. And I'm, I pledge, I'm gonna work with you. I really am.
Mr. St. Columbia, can you say one thing for me?
What's that?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
I'm gonna adjourn. Thanks, Mr. Columbia.